Before we get started with roll call, we do not have a forum tonight. We have two council people missing and also the mayor is not here this evening. He's acting mayor. We cannot vote on anything, so it's going to be informational only. And if you have any questions or answers, just maybe do those the best we can. At this time, I'll do roll call.
Which way?
President.
Baker?
Here.
Beverly?
Hi.
Sure.
Sure.
Masset and Jim are absent, and Barth is acting mayor.
Can't vote on the minutes and everything, but does anyone have any questions for the minutes from last meeting?
No.
All right, moving along. Any questions on the bills?
Corey, what's a bannerman?
That's what they drag the fields with.
Oh, okay.
Ball fields in it.
You're donating that bannerman to the village. What will the village do with it?
I don't know. It really jurgises.
Oh, well, that's nice of you to donate it back.
Yeah, the street guys will use it for some yard work.
Oh, okay.
The old one. Nothing else, Mike.
Questions, okay? Got to push that through there. We have Superintendent Keith Countryman going to speak in regard to the school levies. Keith, you want to take it to the podium?
Sure. Please put into, first of all, thank you for allowing me to come out and speak to the council tonight and the community. My purpose is just to inform you of the levy and see if you have any questions. The levy that we have on for May 7th is exactly the same as the levy that we took off about three, four years ago. It's a three-quarters of a percent income tax, renewable every five years. And that's what was on before, so we put the exact same thing back on. Purpose of the tax levy is we have a declining budget, as we've been sharing over the past several months, year or so. And also, so part of the money will be used, obviously, for our declining budget that within four or five years, that carryover will be gone without the use of that levy income. And then also, we're short on space, and we're planning an addition of an academic and athletic facility. It'll have two preschool rooms in it, two high school rooms, a community room, that can all be used for academic purposes. And in doing that, it also opens up areas inside the main building because of our growing population. Our kindergarten classes have been quite large. We've ran out of elementary classrooms on the elementary side. And then we also have all of our intervention specialist teachers throughout the whole building actually all share a room, so they don't have their own rooms anymore. We have them doubled up. So it will relieve some space in the main building and give us a little more room for some more classrooms, for some academic options that we always try to look at to help improve for our students. Also in that structure will be some practice gym areas, and there will be a wrestling area for our wrestling team that does not have a place of their own to practice in. A weight room, of course, locker rooms and restrooms would also be located in there. Adequate safety features that would match the safety features and stuff that we have within the building, such as a fob system and camera system for security purposes. Looking at a covered walkway to connect that building to the existing building, and that will also keep our, in particular, our little preschool kids will be able to walk out through there without having to go outside. Plus, it also connects that building to the main building, which I think is really important for safety purposes. That is the covered walkway that we're looking at. There would also, we're looking at a drive to Route 18, and we believe that that will help alleviate some of the traffic issues. I don't know if that will solve all of them, but it'll certainly cut it in half if you have two different exits, and entrances, it will definitely make a difference. So that drive to Route 18 is something that we're looking at. And if the levy passes May 7th, we plan to get started on that drive as quickly as possible in an effort to possibly have that completed before the beginning of next school year, or very close to the beginning of next school year. Obviously, the other structure will take a year of planning or so, and that would not stop or start construction until next spring with a completion date of fall, ready for us to use fall of 2020. So it's not nearly as long to build. The structure would be a metal-type structure with some brick on it to help it match the existing building, but it would not be a completely brick building like our current structure in an effort to obviously save cost on that. And that's it. You know, we wanted to make sure that you folks in our community knows about that levy coming up May 7th, and we encourage people to support us. I have a few flyers here that I'll leave for our levy promotion. It talks about academic classrooms, community access, entrance from Route 18, and the sports practice facilities. I wanted to mention too about those sports practice facilities. Our kids, we have so many programs out at the school, and the kids, it's really difficult to find gym space after school without them going till, practicing till sometimes eight, nine o'clock at night. And so by adding that extra space, the kids will get finished quicker, they'll be able to get home quicker for homework purposes. It will also allow a place for our little kids. The mini-aces programs, I think currently they go to Antwerp, Catholic Church, different places to practice because there's just not gym space for them out there. So it'll help with that aspect, too, that will obviously feed up then into our junior high and varsity programs. So, any questions?
I know I've heard numbers in the past here. You've had about a 90-student increase this year, ballpark? Have you got projections for the next couple of years?
We haven't had a 90-increase this year alone. That's been...
Over the course of years?
Yeah. I would say, Mike, that since I've been superintendent, it's increased by, I'd say, around 45 to 50. From 10 years ago, when we first built the building, you're looking more than 90. Don't underestimate.
You have increases every year?
Yeah. Our kindergarten classes for the last three years have, you know, 75, 80 kids in them, which is great. I mean, that's a good thing for the school and the community. Once in a while, you'll get a class go through that's smaller with, you know, like, say, 60, and we can reduce a teacher at that grade level going up through. But when there's 75, 80 kids, that's too many for...
It's overfilled.
Three rooms, yeah. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Keith.
Feel free to put it in the back of your car window.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
You're going to vote no votes, are you?
Very good.
At this time, we also have another speaker today with the local council, and Lisa Weiner from the Defiance Humane Society. You're up, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for, again, allowing us on your agenda tonight. My purpose for being here is I saw the video from your last council meeting and hearing Chief Denning's comments and all regarding this cat bite situation, I felt like we really needed to come back and respond and give you a full picture of the situation. And hopefully, at that point, you know, when I looked at the video again, I saw some of you in this room were very quick to change your perspective on us and your feeling of support, your recent support that you donated, and I get that 100%. So my purpose here tonight is to, three things, to clarify roles and responsibilities a little bit. It's about as clear as mud, to be perfectly honest. I want to reiterate the purpose that we did request the funding for, so we're clear on that, and everybody's just on the same page with it. And then also to give you a really full version of the incident from our perspective, and from there, really let you make your mind up from there, but at least you'll be doing so with having all the information that you did not have previously and unfortunately was not portrayed in the Crescent News article. And truly unfortunately, we spent the last 18 months rebuilding this organization from the brink of it closing, and I personally have spent a lot of time there, so I have a passion for it. And rebuilding not only the organization, but our reputation in the community and making sure that everybody is, you know, feels good about it. It's a community service, and they feel good about supporting us. I certainly wouldn't want anyone in this room or anyone else to regret providing support to us in any way. So, one, I thank you for what you had agreed to and what you had voted on previously, but I want you all to be comfortable with that support. And if you're not, then we'll talk about steps to reverse that, for sure. But at least I want you to be able to make the decision based on all the facts. So first, let me just clarify my roles a little bit. From our organization standpoint, while way back when it was called Defiance County Humane Society, it's Fort Defiance Humane Society, it is not a county organization in any way, shape, or form. It is a private, nonprofit organization that was incorporated in 1966, and it's been that way ever since. We do not, we are not governed by the county commissioners. We are not funded by taxpayer dollars. It is all funded by private donations, company donations, grants and fees, frankly. Our connection to the county is simply through a contract. The county contracts us to basically act as their dog pound. So there isn't a separate dog pound that the dog warden would typically have to operate. Dog warden is responsible for dogs running at large, and any of those dogs that he picks up, that their agency picks up, they bring to us. We care for them at that point. That's just a contractual agreement. That's the end of our county relationship. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that because there's a lot of, not just here, but there's a lot of confusion on that, and a lot of it was based on the original name. Defiance County Humane Society kind of implies it's a county agency, and it is not. With that said, we also employ the humane agent, Stacy Federkey. So she is our employee. She is paid for by the Humane Society. So again, private, not taxpayer dollars, and it's certainly not a county position as well. While she services the county, she is not a county employee. If that makes sense. However, she is, she was a sworn-in law enforcement agent. She is there to enforce the laws outlined in the O R C related specifically to animal abuse and neglect. That's it. That's where she comes in. So I want to correct a statement that Chief Denning made in your last meeting in that she was not doing her job. Responding to a cat bite is not her job. And I'm not saying that in the context of we wouldn't help, and I'll get to that when I talk about the situation, but just to be clear, humane agent is to respond to issues regarding animal abuse and neglect. That's it. That's where it ends technically. As an agency, as an organization, a private organization, we have policies and procedures, and we are governed by a local board of directors. That's who we all report to. That's who Stacy reports to, and that's what we abide by, by obviously the O R C and then our own policies and procedures. So again, going back to the humane agent responsibilities, that is to report, any report that we get on animal abuse or neglect, Stacy will investigate that, and that's up to and including any animal abuse, beatings, cruelty, inadequate food, water, and shelter, just unsanitary, improper conditions, that type of thing, or if an animal has been abandoned. We get lots of calls where people just move away and leave their animals in the house alone. Those are the types of calls that we would respond to, that she would be responding to. On the other hand, the dog warden is a county position. That is a county agency, and their responsibility is for dogs running at large. They don't have responsibility for cats at all. They, in the same light, follow the O R C. There's lots of rules out there under the Ohio Revised Code that talk about how to handle dogs and dogs running at large and the whole dog licensing part, which is not an issue, obviously, for cats. That's where the dog warden's office comes into play as well. From a health department standpoint, they come into play here regarding any kind of animal, be it dog, cat, or otherwise. The health department is supposed to be the main department, the department in charge of any animal bites. They are the ones that are to be contacted. They manage that case. They may manage it in the case of a dog bite. They may also do it in accordance with the dog warden, depending on the situation. We may house a dog that is quarantined and not able to be quarantined at the owner's home for a specific reason. Dog warden would bring it to us because we contract with them. We would house that dog during its quarantine period, but under all of those circumstances, the health department is in charge of those situations. And that is according to the Ohio Revised Code and your own Hicksville ordinances. Both of those are, thankfully, they're in conjunction with each other, but the health department is always that agency in charge. So dog warden kind of has a special spot. We have certain areas that we cover as well. I will tell you, cats are a little in the gray area because there aren't really a whole lot of laws regarding them. It's just the way it is today, but to be clear, it's, again, from a humane agent's standpoint, it's when an animal is in some type of, at some type of risk for abuse or neglect. And just for a point of reference, too, just from, I'll say, from a staffing perspective, so the dog warden's office responds to calls for dogs running at large. They brought into us, not as their only duty, but last year they brought us about 154 dogs during the course of the year. They are staffed with, typically during the week, three people, and then there's an on-call person over the weekend for emergencies. Stacy's the only humane agent in this county. We respond to everything in the county. She responded to over 180 calls last year alone, aside from her job at the shelter as well, you know, of managing the animals at the shelter. So just to give you a point of reference of where that is. Point number two, from a funding perspective, I was here back in December. I presented to you all about our request for funding, and that funding was to help us combat the feline overpopulation issue. And by that, in particular, it was to continue offering the public, our community, the low-cost spay and neuters, the clinics that we've been doing regularly, allowing us, the assistance would allow us to continue that for 2019. And then our goal going forward, and we're doing it right now as we speak, is applying for grants that will help us fund those programs in 2020 and beyond. But it was a one-time request to the county, the city of Defiance, and the village of Hicksville, to help us with that, provide financial assistance, and that was, again, to continue to provide low-cost spay and neuter options for our community. It was not to respond to cat bites. And again, that was, to me, a critical piece in the last meeting. Those two were commingled, that, you know, it was made to seem like we came in asking for money, and then the minute you approved it, we wouldn't respond. We wouldn't comply with anything, and basically, your hands up. That is not the case. So those are two very separate situations. As far as the incident goes, again, in my mind, my personal opinion, it should have been a pretty minor incident in the course of a normal day. And frankly, we've all spent way too much time talking about it thus far. But again, I feel like it's something that we had to do to protect our own reputation, and again, never wanting to leave you all, who just agreed to support us, leave you all thinking, okay, you know, we made a bad decision there. So Friday, March 15th, dispatcher called Stacy at 9:05 a.m. and made her aware of this cat bite incident. From what we understood, the owner was at the hospital getting her issues treated. Her pet cat was still at home, in her home. What I understand, it was one she had had quite a while. Don't know anything beyond that. And the dispatcher had told Stacy that Chief Denning wanted her to respond to the cat bite incident. Stacy directed the dispatcher to the health department for the O R C. We have no jurisdiction over cat bites, and, you know, again, not having those conversations and going through a dispatcher, perhaps something got lost in translation, I don't know, but bottom line is Stacy provided that direction and also had left a message to have the chief call her back, just to have a conversation on was there something else that was needed. Obviously, the lady was already being treated, so there wasn't some emergency situation that she was trapped in her house or something like that. At that time, Stacy also left the dispatcher with the information, saying, if you need additional help, if you need help, maybe catching the animal in the house or, you know, some other issue, or obviously, if the health department deemed necessary, we would quarantine it at the shelter. But if there's additional help needed, give me a call. Stacy does that with any agency. She's gone on many calls with the dog warden. She doesn't have to, but she goes out to help them catch some of the pesky dogs that are running at large that aren't easy to catch. So there's no issue there with helping the other agencies by any means, but the original response was the correct one, and that is you need to contact the health department. They are the agency. So to me, and not even to me, just by law, it's a health department issue, it's a responsible pet ownership issue, in this case with a cat bite. You know, this is somebody's pet. If they decided, once the quarantine was over and the health department cleared everything, if they decided they wanted to surrender the pet, they'd certainly take that. If they decided they wanted to euthanize the pet, they can certainly have that done at their vet as well, but it's responsible pet ownership. Those things happen all the time with animals. And unless there's some other physical threat or some other emergency situation, or in the case of dogs, where there is, there are laws to follow with deeming it dangerous and things like that, there's nothing else to be done except responsible pet ownership and going from there. And again, if there was additional assistance needed, there's no issue. We'd be happy to go out and help with that. In addition to the original call from the dispatcher and Stacy leaving a message, she also left two more messages that day. None of those calls were returned. However, the dog warden was called. They, too, directed them to the health department, as they should. County commissioners were called, and perhaps even the sheriff's office, I'm not sure. I've heard dueling conversations on that. But other agencies were called. We were not called back on any of those messages. You all were notified in your March 19th meeting, that Monday night, and obviously then we were made aware of, that this was, had become an issue, had become a serious issue. So Stacy called the chief Tuesday morning on the 20th. They were finally able to speak. Hopefully, there was some closure there, or at least agree to disagree on perhaps the situation, but we also had talked to the mayor as well. Just, again, you know, this is about our reputation and 18 months of a lot of work of trying to build things back up and, you know, talking with folks like you and trying to continue to get the funding we need. We don't get taxpayer dollars, so we are asking for every dollar we get. And just those simple comments and that simple article in the newspaper was very detrimental to the work that we've done in 18 months. And for that, I'll be honest, I'm ticked. But most importantly, I wanted to come back here to you all today and make sure that you at least had the full situation outlined to you, roles and responsibilities, and from there you can certainly make up your mind. And if you truly, at that point, you feel like, you know what, you don't want to provide us support, we will send that money back. And that's my feeling on it. I never want to, I never want to take money and have somebody regret that decision, for sure. I think the one lesson here, though, is a simple return phone call could have avoided all of this for a lot of folks. So if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer. Stacy's here as well to answer anything that you might have from that perspective. If you come up with something later, something you think about at 2 a.m., feel free to contact us, and we'd be happy to talk through it.
Thank you, Lisa. Does anybody have a question?
No.
Well, thank you, girls, very much for coming up and...
Thank you. Thank you for giving us time.
Both sides are very informative. Thank you.
I want to respond because I got the phone call. I don't want to... Because I'm going to tell you right, tell you right now, she didn't do it.
They got their side, let him.
No, I'm not going to have someone say what she just said. Plain and simple. All right? She was requested to respond by dispatch because we were tied up with a criminal offense at the school. She chose not to respond. Okay? Plain and simple. I got the phone call.
Hey, DC, this is Sierra. We have a complaint in Hicksville where a female has received multiple cat bites, and she is at CMH. The health department has been contacted, but her chief Denning, he says to contact you.
I know. I'm going to wait and see.
Okay. Did you want to respond out there? They are all tied up on a sex offense, so I don't have any Hicksville officers to go.
I mean, I think the health department is the only one that goes. I mean, does she know where the cat is?
I think so. And she wants to put the cat down. The nurse I spoke to said that she was concerned because she thought that the cat had to be quarantined for 10 days, you know?
And, yeah, and that's all done through the health department? So, and it was her own cat?
I believe so. Yeah, it happened at her home.
Okay. Yeah, the health department should be the one that goes up there and responds. They're the ones that take care of all the quarantine, because the owner can quarantine the cat at her home unless she can't, then she can quarantine it. You know, we could help out with the quarantine, but then, you know, she's still responsible for the euthanasia, if that's what she wants to do with the cat.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would, I mean, that would just be the health department.
Okay. I'll just call the nurse back then and let her know that the health department will take care of it.
Okay. And if, I mean, if there's something else that I can do, I would definitely let you know. It just wouldn't fall under a humane thing, unless she needs help with the cat.
Okay. All right. I miss you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye. Bye-bye.
We don't know if that's a neglect or a cruelty case until you investigate it. Plain and simple.
But you did what was a cat bite incident with a personal...
It doesn't matter until you go to investigate a crime, like I told her, she was the dispatcher. You don't know what's going on until you go to investigate the crime or investigate what the incident was. I requested her assistance, plain and simple.
That's okay. She responds, she's a humane agent. She is...
Exactly. Troy, would you like to...
I agree generally with what Lisa said about the different roles in the Health Department. And I, my experience, obviously, Stacy knows because I talk to her all the time, is more dealing with dog bites and dealing with Randy and whatever. The Health Department people do not go out and investigate those. Randy does those, turns the information over to the Health Department, and then they go on with the testing and all that stuff. But as far as going out and getting statements or trying to figure out what happened, I mean, I've never seen one where the Health Department sent a representative over out to a scene to gather information. I think, this is my personal view, I wasn't here at the last meeting, I was on vacation, so I had to read about it in the newspaper, too, and then briefly talked to Mark about it after I read it. My thought was that it was, they're tied up, could you respond over here, see what's going on, do whatever. Now, is that in her number one job duty notice is to deal with abuse, neglect? And that's what I usually talk to her about, is trying to get into a home because there's abandoned animals and how much, how long do they have to wait until they can forcefully enter and stuff like that? But the bottom line is, I don't disagree with Mark. You don't know if there's a mistreatment issue, a neglect issue or whatever, until somebody figures out what happened. At that point, as I understand it, all the officers that were working were tied up, like I said on the call, were tied up at a fairly serious criminal deal. And so he's asking for assistance. My guess is, and Mark and I never talked about this, the logic was, obviously, cats are in the forefront of your mind because they were just here that recently talking about it. He knows the dog warden doesn't handle cats, which I agree with, that's in his statutory duties, there's no call for him. Although, I did happen to speak with Randy, and he basically said to me, hey, if they were all tied up on something and they had a problem with the cat and they called my office, we'd send somebody over there to help out and do what we could do. That's what I thought the problem was, not so much that Stacy was expected to go over there, do some formal investigation, take everything over, do the Health Department's job as much as it was, like you mentioned, and maybe they did, maybe they didn't, like if they called the Sheriff's Department and said, hey, I know this is kind of silly, but do you have a deputy in the area? We need somebody to go over here and take this information down and do whatever so it can be passed on, that type of thing, like a call for assistance. Like, and I realize those are all government agencies and you guys aren't, but in your role as humane agent, that was my understanding as to basically what the call was. It wasn't a demand, hey...
No, we're requesting assistance, and to me, they failed to...
And also, I was, that was on a Friday, what you don't have is there was a second phone call that I called back to see...
Yes, I got that phone call, too.
Is there anything else that you need, which was a short...
And that was well after the fact.
And I was, I don't, it was within 45 minutes.
Right, it was well, okay, here's why I didn't return the phone call.
Called back and said that I would, you know, is there something else that you need? I'm not exactly sure how that one went. I did call back, but I was also in town tied up on something.
You also have my personal cell number, too, you could have called.
And I asked you to call me twice and you have...
And I'll tell you why I didn't call you, because one hour I went and took care of the problem. There was no reason for me to even call you. I went and responded because I requested you to respond, you didn't respond. Why do I need to call you if I went and took care of the problem? No need.
But you called the Commissioners.
You darn right I did. Because I thought she was part of the cat bite.
I think we're taking a cat bite and making a mountain out of it.
Well, I tell you what, let's go this route, and I appreciate everybody's comments, everybody kind of brought what they thought to light from their perspective. We need to work together. Had a situation happen, you know what kind of what we need from, if this happens again in the future, we kind of need some assistance both ways. You know, we can sit here and argue about who said, he said, they did, we did, it's not getting us anywhere. Okay? So I appreciate, really do appreciate everybody's time and coming over here and having Mark's, you know, questions answered. But we kind of know where we stand in the future. We will need some help, maybe if this happens again, you know, and then bring the Health Department into it also if we need to. But...
And the Health Department, we talked to them...
Sure.
So if they have a call and they think there's something else that needs to be done, they contact us. There's no issue there. We work with all of those agencies. There's never an issue.
And things like this happen a lot, you know, the communication and we thought you're going to take care of a certain situation, and I think we still think you need to take care of a certain situation. And you said you will, you know, maybe in the future if need be. So if we can put this to bed, if we need to discuss this further, maybe in a sit-down with the mayor and your agency and the chief to get an understanding, I think we can do that. But again, I appreciate everybody's time, I really do.
It's, I mean, the way her job description is...
Yeah, it sounds...
I'm sorry, and I'd like to consider Mark a friend of mine, but on Stacy's side, if it's not in my job description, then I'm not playing the game. If I'm supposed to call the Health Department for a cat bite, and cats really get on my nerves because they're not governed or taken, I mean, we've got so many in this town that have deleted the gene pool through the families of cats. I think she did her job.
And just, may I add, I've known Mark for 20 years. You know, we've worked together at the Sheriff's Office for 18-plus, so I understand where he's coming from and I respect that position. And we did talk about it, so hopefully you can respect my position as well and move forward.
I think a lot of us sitting up here, I was there, I was with Mark all the way, and I still am in a way, I thought you should respond. When he couldn't have anybody there, somebody needed to respond. Somebody.
I agree with the...
Somebody.
Call me asshole, see if they got spread.
What I'm saying is, I think she's in the realm of people, that's, in my opinion, that's on that list, that if, this isn't going to happen every day. I mean, if it happened today, there's probably two officers that could have responded.
And it was the timing, too, when the donation came up, right after that seven.
Definitely, no doubt.
That is bad timing.
Sure, absolutely. And that's why we want to do at least have the full picture out, so you don't feel like, okay, we just gave the money for something that the two are mutually exclusive first of all.
And speaking of the donation, when I talked to the mayor today, we thought it would be nice, since this is kind of a first-time funding for this project, if you could maybe gather some numbers, if you are getting some people to bring over some cats for spay and neutering, if you could maybe get back with us in, you know, six, nine months and let us know if the program's working, we really would like to know, that'd be great.
We have our clinic on the 12th of this month, so that's the next one, but we also do it every Friday.
Sure.
We include the public. So we're going to provide you and the other agencies with regular updated numbers.
Okay, appreciate that.
Absolutely.
All right, well, again, thank you for everybody's comments, and we'll move along now. Boards and Commissions?
I thank you, ladies, and I thank you, Mark. Let's put it to sleep. Put it to bed.
You have the Park Board minutes in your packet here. Does anybody have any questions? I know Cory Wine is here today representing the Park Board. Any questions to Cory? Cory, I want to thank you for continued work on the Day in the Park. I think it's going very successfully so far. I know people are still looking for vendors and sponsors and different things. Along with that, I know we have a meeting Wednesday night at 6:30, 7:30? See? Wrong again, but 7:30 Wednesday night. Very good.
Mike, I put this on the table tonight, yeah.
Right. There is an update on kind of the donations that Cory and the Board have kind of brought in thus far, and it looks wonderful, it's been great, and so different people doing different things, so thank you for that.
Has there been any more discussion on if you're attending the Park Board?
We have not discussed it since the last meeting. I know we brought it up in passing and everything, and it's something we can't vote on tonight, but does anybody have? I personally didn't have a problem with it. If it was maintained, ran while I talked to the chief, it was organized and oversight.
Troy, I think we got to pass something to amend.
Just for the day, we just passed by motion or whatever to disregard the no-drinking-in-the-park rule for a day.
The holiday, so to speak, of the rule. I had two ladies that were quite a bit older than me, so they were still young. The one lady came up, put her arm around me, and she said, this will be a nice thing in the park. I said, day in the park? She goes, yeah. I said, I believe you're right. She said, but why is it that you have to drink all the time? I said, ma'am, I haven't drank 29 years. She said, well, you want that beer down? I said, no. I don't want anything. I didn't ask for anything, I'm not dealing with anything. I don't want any. She goes, I just think it's a shame that when Hicksville has something, they have to have beer and everything. I said, well, everybody's entitled to an opinion. That is the only negative thing that I have heard. The bell?
Well, I believe we have any other committee minutes in the packet. Administrator's report?
Yeah, a few things here. I did talk to Gary and Val, I'll just double check as far as that waiver request. Unless the Park Board's not in agreement, I'm not planning to sign any waiver for the truck. I don't think it'd be in our best interest if somebody else does our property. I still remember the fence from last year. But me, that isn't it. So anyway, that was part of mine, I'm not planning to sign anything. Otherwise, the chipping is done. Guys have been out about seven weeks there, so it's time we move on. One person did corner Mike and swore up and down this was advertised as a spring yard cleanup, and I don't know where it was a key, where she got that idea, but it was only chipping limbs. So we're done with that. I put in, if you want to call it minutes, from the EPA inspection today. Overall, things are going well. Sampling, they were coming special to do tomorrow, they get set up today. I've got explaining in there, the rain over the weekend really going to goof up what they're sampling due to the amount of water we're running through the plant. So we're probably going to let her get dinged on that, but Andy said there's really nothing we could have done. It's either bypass or either run some treated water through or bypass a whole lot of untreated water. So the two choices, trying to treat some of it was better than bypassing. Otherwise, those three hours of discussion, and they're pretty much happy with the way things are going on there. The Low to Moderate Income Survey, has anybody got any questions on that? It's definitely something council never has to worry about, or they haven't over the 18 years I've been around. The numbers have shifted a little bit. I think the state's wrong on what they've got, but as long as they're seeing this is right, we'll benefit by it. So for future funding, it's going to come in handy. Cheryl and I will be out of town next Thursday for another exciting board meeting. Otherwise, just updates on all the different utility-related projects, the different studies. Really nothing to add since what I've got here. Peterson's hoping to get things wrapped up this week or very early next week down at the sewer plant. That made Andy happy. The U V system is going to get reinstalled next week, so that made him happy, too. Aqua Line did get in today to start looking for leaks. They should finish up tomorrow and then we'll get a report shortly on where we might be losing water. I guess, other than questions folks might have, that's about it.
We were talking at one time, was the city able to, or you guys discussed putting a chain or some type of obstruction across the Adventure Alley parking lot?
The last, I had left it with Gary and Val last fall, was they were thinking of looking at doing something. I don't know exactly what those plans were. But then I talked to them, I think it was two weeks ago, might have been around the same time as this waiver deal. And they're, at this point, were wondering if we were going to do anything, so I told Jimmy to get with them, and they said, well, we'll wait and see if it gets the sign saying no backing or no trucks, whatever that sign says, solves the problem before we do anything.
I know they got an estimate at one time, and it was like six grand, I believe, and we're like, that's a lot of money for a front end, well, you know, a sign or a chain or something. So I think we were hoping that you were...
Well, we're going to try to come up with something. So I said, at this point, just let me know if they want to go that route.
Well, put something up, because some of those guys can't even read English on the signs.
Well, they were okay saying, we'll wait and see what happens, but that doesn't mean we can't do anything.
Well, we talked about putting a header across there for several years and still haven't, we haven't done any.
Well, once you get what you want, Gary, maybe come up with Jimmy, come up with an idea, put some type of barrier up there.
If we can find pipe that Matthews or Fitz or whatever, I mean, it shouldn't be that tough to do. I mean, I don't think we'll have to hire Arrow or anybody.
No. I'll come and help you.
Everybody have any questions for Kent? All right, next on the agenda is the Solicitor's Report.
Got nothing.
And here is nothing. Can't read nothing, can't talk about nothing.
That's right. I don't know if you can talk about it.
Department heads, we got, Chief, you want to talk again?
I've got nothing.
Nothing? Okay, thank you. Scott?
Do what?
Just to let you know, the grant was ordered from the state for the March radios. We have received them, we have 10 portables and four mobiles. The mobiles have not been installed yet, we're not fully using them yet, but we're getting integrated in. That grant was $46,000 and some change for those radios installation. We're good. We did meet with the grant writer Friday. He gave us some good ideas, some things we hadn't thought of. Probably will be trying for three separate grants, and we'll go in on those when we know more of what we're doing. And Thursday and Friday next week, Bruce Hart and I will be out of town down in Indianapolis. I think that's all I have at this point.
Questions for Scott? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cory, do you have anything for the council, for the Park Board?
No, I just wanted to ask about the whole beer tent, they wanted me to ask about that. Also, you guys given, you guys get your numbers for what we are asking for financially from the village?
I can't do anything tonight.
Can I also generate the Easter egg hunt, the 13th, or the Saturday, the 13th? Yeah, the 13th.
For what?
The Easter egg hunt.
Yeah, you want to tell everybody about it or just want me to pass it on?
Yeah, just pass it on. April 13th at 2:00, registration starting at 1:00.
April 13th at the park, it starts at 2:00?
2:00.
Registration at 1:00?
Registration's at 1:00.
It's the Easter egg hunt for the community, and again, the lawn's put a lot of time and energy in, thank you for that. Great event for the community.
And we got, it'll be 16 bikes again, get away this year, a model bike.
I do a lot for that, that's great. 16 bicycles, good. So hopefully, a lot of residents, people in the community can go down and enjoy that day. Thanks again.
About 7,000 eggs.
7,000 eggs.
Our church is going to stop all those forms.
Oh, my.
Very good. Thanks again for that, the Easter egg hunt. All right, carrying on, Fiscal Officer, Cheryl?
You have the Fund Status Report, the March Utility Collections, Income Text Collections, Police Department and Mayor's Court Collections, and I put in the numbers for the Day in the Park so far, sponsorships. They're coming in every day, you can see on there.
Very good, thanks, Cheryl. Any other questions for Cheryl? Okay, I know the mayor had a downtown revitalization grant meeting here, we had several... Yep.
They're coming in every day, you can see on there.
Very good, thanks, Cheryl. Any other questions for Cheryl? Okay, I know the mayor had a downtown revitalization grant meeting here. We had several people in the, in the area, business owners, and the people that came to that meeting on March 20th. They worked with, um, Collette Mills from the Pogmaider Design Group, talked about the different properties that would, um, probably grant from this project. If you have any questions, you can get with the mayor. I guess they have another meeting coming up, April 10th, it's a webinar coming up. So, um, once the mayor's back, I think she's coming back at the end of the week here, where she can give you some more information regards to that grant project for downtown revitalization. There's also a booklet and some meeting minutes obtained about the OML transportation funding. But, so they have a meeting coming up this Thursday, April 4th, in Defiance. I think I can plan on attending that, but it is a Defiance County Active Transportation Plan. It's transportation defined as human powered transportation, such as walking and bicycling, and a proposed plan that will help the county understand where needs or, and gaps exist in active transportation infrastructure. So if they had maybe have some grants for a walkway in the park, a couple people in the park have talked about some type of walkway, maybe that would be of an interest to them, so. But so I plan on going to do that on Thursday, 10:00 in Defiance. There is a proclamation that was given. I'd like to read that real quick. April 2019 is World Autism Month, whereas autism affects an estimated one to, one in 59 children, one in 37 boys, and one in 151 girls, and is a complex disorder that affects each person differently, resulting in unique strengths and challenges, and whereas autism can cause challenges with verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, repetitive behaviors, and can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, and social economic background, and whereas autism is often accompanied by medical conditions that impact quality of life, and whereas a comprehensive collaborative approach will help to advance research, provide a better understanding of the many forms of autism, while strengthening advocacy efforts and ensuring access to services and resources throughout the lifespan, and whereas early diagnosis and intervention tailored to individual needs can have long, lifelong benefits, easing the transition to adulthood and fostering greater independence, and whereas each person and family affected by autism should have access to reliable information, support and opportunities to live up to their greatest potential, and whereas the Village of Hicksville is honored to take part in the annual observation of World Autism Month and World Autism Awareness Day to address the diverse needs of individuals and families affected by autism. Now therefore, I, Michael Barth, acting mayor, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as World Autism Month to increase understanding and acceptance of people with autism spectrum disorder. Thank you for all this, and please help those that have this terrible disease, and hopefully they can find quality of life that they live on. Is there any questions for council at this time?
Uh, I would request a very, very brief executive session for general knowledge.
That's not one of the reasons. That's not one of the reasons.
I asked you, you said yes.
I thought you were generically saying, you still need one of them.
Land purchase.
Thank you. There you go. How can we go and vote to the general?
We're done.
Oh.
You can vote to go and you can follow the executive.
Okay, we have a motion for executive session.
I'll second it.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yeah.
We get to vote on that? Okay.
Do you have, you want to stick around? We ask you to maybe go up to the front office or the mayor's office and stand for a while, and then we can come and get you when it's over.
Anything to be revealed afterward?
Anything to be revealed afterward.
Okay.
The only thing we're going to do when we come out is turn.
Don't tell me twice.
Will not be very long.
Again, thank you for coming, being here.
Thanks, guys.